Okay. But I got the seatbelt on? Okay, it's we'll call our meeting to order at 9:34. For starter businesses adoption of the agenda recommended that Weston Council Committee of the whole adopt the agenda as circulated mover and secondary row and Latham all in favor carried. Certainly a reminder to disclose any carry interest. None. I guess we'll welcome everyone this morning. And with that, we'll carry to the draft official plan policy direction report. Will we have the report first and then give direction?
Yeah, we're gonna have the report first. Just we're just reminding everybody, this isn't public participation. There'll be a presentation done by the consultants and then as we move through, there will be time after each slide for questions. Just raise your hand from council. So Patty, would you like me to bring that up or Zoe? I did give you co-host so you can bring up the show.
Sure, I'll share my screen.
Okay, the floor is yours. Lead us through the wonderful world of official plan.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Hopefully it won't be much longer before we're in front of you in person to do these presentations as we go through the OP process. The weather seems to be getting nicer. Things seem to be getting a little better out there. So I am optimistic mood this morning. I have a few slides Zoe and I are going to walk you through today. And as Jenna mentioned, we'll try to pause throughout and just take the questions and treat this informally. So Zoe, why don't we go to the next slide? And what we wanted to speak about today was just a brief recap on the process to date. Touch on some of the feedback from stakeholders and the earlier engagement activities in the process. And then share the draft policy direction. We discuss next steps. Now we can go to the next slide Zoe. So by way of reminder, OP, it's a document that's created an authority planning act. It's got your long-term vision for land use growth and development. It's also a tool that the municipality can use to guide its infrastructure investment programs, but also be used to as a tool to attract private sector investment. And as always worth noting, not a static document, you can always amend the OP, but now is the time where we're doing something. We were trying to do it right the first time, but there's always opportunities for amendments along the way. The we go next up. Yeah. So by way of background, the current OP was adopted in a way to approved in 2011. So it's well over 10 years in force and effect. And there's been a number of changes that have taken place over that time. And these are these changes are some of the drivers for the OP. There are of course, some of these provincial policy and there's a new county OP. So there's these sort of more mechanical updates to align policies that have to happen. That you know, is through our conversations with you and hearing from the public, there are no growth management items to be addressed, whether we call them pressures or ways to better position the municipality for growth is probably one of the main drivers of updating the OP. So very briefly, the new OP will will is required to address the matters of provincial, which is some of the planning act. Certainly will be prepared to be consistent with the new PPS. It'll incorporate all relevant legislative changes and policy directions. To date, it will address the growth management and economic development directions in council and we will use this update as an opportunity to examine the effectiveness of the existing settlement areas to accommodate future growth and development. So the process to date, we're in the middle of the OP process, very important juncture. We're in the middle of phase two. We're about to start working on the drafts, policies and schedules of the OP. We have done policy audit, our background report, the long-range projections. We've engaged with the technical advisory committee in front of you, the council, this is the second time. And drafted a policy directions report, just the sort of the main item we're discussing today. But you'll know the one thing want to point out in the schedules is a couple of things here where we have several drafts to do. So there's through all that drafting of plans and policies, there's opportunities for feedback and from council and from staff. And of course, there are two additional public engagement components. There's an open house when we have second draft of the OP, we get feedback from the public on that. And then there is a statutory public meeting under the planning act will be in front of council and anyone who has additional comments or concerns can come to council and let us know. There's still further additional changes needed. So very important juncture in the process. And why don't we go to the next slide Zoe, which is just our placeholder slide. I don't know if there's any. Okay. So yeah, recap. Sorry. The purpose really is to update at this point and share those policy directions. So we can go to the next slide. I'll pause for a minute. I don't know if there's any questions on process or where we're going or where we've been. Pause there before we dive into the details.
Questions for see none. Carry on.
All right, let's through the next part here. Since the last meeting, the main focus has been on working through some of the themes from the background report and trying to figure out what the policy implications or directions need to be. We covered growth management and culture, cultural heritage, the natural hazards, economic development, climate change and housing. If we go to the next slide. The main area of focus for us was to dive into some of the growth management implications. And so before we get into that, I don't want to lose sight of a few of the other directions of what we heard from council when we were if we go to the next slide, we will see some of the things we heard, which was ensure the new update. Plant, the new plan has more user-friendly policies, easy to understand from the public and administratively. Make sure that the document is done in a way that we can, you know, turn the corner and attract some, some investment for housing and for economic development. Very specific direction around discouraging, having a policy framework that discourages large industrial and energy projects. And include councils position on those types of projects. Introduce some policies around proactive economic development. Consider affordable housing as a priority as well in the OP. So the main tech piece of technical work that we did since the background report was to revisit our supply demand analysis. You'll recall, we had compared, we added up all the lands that had potential available for development in the settlement areas. And we care compared it against our demand analysis. And it said, you know, on the surface, we've got enough land to accommodate our growth. But we also heard that not all the lands that are designated in the settlement area, they may not be developable. They may have constraints. Can you do some more? Can we meet with you and talk about it? So we did meet with mayor and senior staff to go through the lands in Rodney and West Lauren to better understand, you know, what the constraints might be. And so, you know, there's a couple of things to note. The there are land and I'll walk through a couple maps in a minute. There are lands in the settlement areas that, you know, they have perceived ownership constraints. What that means is, you know, there hasn't been an application in a number of years. There hasn't been conversations about development with the municipality. We're not sure if there's any development interest on these properties, but they count in our supply. So that's an issue for us. If we have a number of lands that are vacant, that are being saying they're developable, but the owner isn't interested or may not be as interested. We need to consider that in our supply demand calculations. There are also properties with flood constraints. We did generally capture most of the floodplain mapping in our analysis and estimates of vacant land. So that is perhaps less of an issue, but it does come into play on a few properties. One of the factors we did not consider initially was about how accessible a property may be. It might be landlocked or not as easily to get access into. So there might be transportation limitations that might prevent it from being developable. We also heard about, you know, because of these are some of the existing industrial uses or municipal uses, there may be some compatibility issues that would limit the likelihood that an area would be suitable for housing. And there could also be natural heritage impacts. Again, with similar to the floodplain, we didn't add out, you know, natural heritage systems in our calculations. But that being said, there's still could be setbacks and constraints and things that might make lands less desirable, shall we say, to be developed. Through the next slides, we will, I'll just walk through a few maps. The intent in here isn't to go through, you know, property by property of the schedules, but to sort of share with you some of the initial thoughts here and that and through the part of Rodney, there are some properties with ownership constraints that perhaps where the developer as the landowner hasn't expressed a ton of interest in development. There are a couple of properties also that have some compatibility constraints with the proximity to industrial uses, and they may not be as desirable for residential uses. The lands to the, to the west there have two red dots are designated for employment uses, but they may have access limitation uses as well. And if they're developed for industrial, that may create some additional compatibility concerns for the lens on Queen Street. So go to the next slide. We'll see the southern portion constraints here to the south of the railway corridor, a couple of properties with perhaps ownership constraints. The land south of the railway corridor on the west to the west. They have access, real considerable access limitations because of both it's creek crossing floodplain, but also the properties that are potentially developable closer to the east. So that particular property may have some challenges. The other property, which is fairly large to the, to the east, the large vacant land just north of the sewage lagoon there has knows very considerable land use constraints that we would need to factor in. So, you know, both those two large properties are in excess of 10 hectares each. And so we would have factored them in our supply demand calculations, but we probably have to provide some kind of discount to them in that calculation. And and revisit that if we go to the next slide, we'll look at West Lauren and you'll see again, there are similar kinds of constraints with a few properties that have ownership constraints. Some of them have particularly one in particular is landlocked and has very limited access, which is the pieces of the northwest component. There north of Pioneer Lane. Um, and the lands to the south, you'll see the green dot with heritage constraints. We would have discounted that from our calculation. But you know, from a settlement area inclusion perspective, properties like that that don't have very limited development potential because of the constraints, other flooding or heritage, it may make sense to remove those lines from the settlement and provide some land elsewhere. So we go to the next slide. I'll sort of sum it up. So again, not to go through again, like each property specifically, but there's clearly some lands in the settlement area that are going to have some constraints. There's an opportunity for us to explore some options to optimize the development potential in Rodney and West Lauren. And that what we would see that well, the way we'd like to approach that is update our calculations, include a factor for vacant for lands that might have ownership constraints. Typically, this is, you know, we kind of carry a 10% type of factor for, for long-term vacancy for those lands. And, you know, I don't think that's going to change the overall supply, demand dimensions, but we can haven't done the calculation yet. And we'll certainly do the sensitivity testing to see if there's difference. I think the big opportunity is still to go through the, the boundaries and see if there's opportunities to remove some of the lands that aren't developable or discount them and expand the boundary to places where there's potentially more landowner interest, better connectivity for the community, these sort of things. So through the neck, our actual main next step here is as we start to draft the policies, we will be updating our calculations and start preparing some options for, for those settlement areas and that they would come back to you with those options and, and also be vetted through the public process. So I don't know if there's a next. Yeah. So that's a good spot to pause here and take questions or comments.
Questions from anyone? I have just one in, in your overview, do you give any weight to the ease of serviceability of properties?
It's a good question. Lands within the settlement area are presumed to be serviceable, but that assumption can be checked with staff to see if some of these lands have, you know, water wastewater limitations that are really prevent them from being, it's something we should consider, but like the assumption is usually they are if they're in the settlement area.
Well, certainly I think it's something that has to be put on the table. If, if you are enticing development to come, they're, they're going to go to the sweet spots, not to the not to the heavy lifting areas that will require additional infrastructure costs. So I think that as we're going through this, certainly they should be ranked in part of that ranking should be the availability and ease of servicing.
Yeah, we can certainly consider that then as we go, as we, particularly as we go through the process to examine like some options of adding land or subtracting land serviceability would be a factor we can consider and work with staff on.
Any other questions? On me.
I'm just how, how I'm just trying to get my mind around the idea of removing development lands from our plan to add other lands. Does that happen a lot? In your experience?
It is. It's a good question. It does happen with more frequency now. We just went through a OP review with SoCal where we did, we call it rationalization, but it's essentially removing lands and adding lands. And a lot of the official plans, particularly ones that were done or have legacy issues, they designated lots of land from, and they didn't have a lot of control on demand. And because the policies require us to balance things, it does put a lot of pressure on municipalities to have the right lands in, in, in the boundary that will get developed. So we have done this in a number of other places in the last five, five to 10 years. And it is relatively normal, normal practice, but it can still be controversial with landowners. So it's important that the public process is open and transparent and when you people can provide the feedback. Because we would approach it a little bit from a desktop approach. And we don't always have good line of sight on some of the ownership considerations as well. So.
Right. Thank you.
Just one last question for me, as we have all heard, the provincial government is, is making noises about changing housing strategies. Is that something that, that we'll have to keep an eye on and incorporate those legislative changes in our OP?
You, Mr. Mayor, you're touching on tricky topic for the consultant, which is of course you, the, the policy environment or the legislation never stops changing. Our scope, schedule and budget tries to like assess everything and then move forward. Bill, I think this is bill 109 or 103 rather, there's just, you know, being tabled with problems to deal with affordable housing strategies integral to something like the to consider. You know, and through the process and you know, anything up until like our any legislative changes that happen between now and the end of draft to the OP will have to work with Heather and figure out like the mechanics of how we address them, but they do have to be addressed. And any, anything after that, you probably just touch through an amendment, like a housekeeping amendment a year later. That's something, as you say, as big as, as big as these housing ones, they're going to have a big impact, I think, on, on, on the crafting of policies if they if they get implemented.
From your perspective is it's, it's a concern that's out there, how it fits into the giant puzzle. We'll have to just kind of feel our way along with it.
Yeah.
Okay. So you know, other questions? Carry on.
Keep rolling here. I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Zoe here. She's going to walk us through some of the survey work we did and the, and the feedback from from the public.
Perfect. Thank you, Patty. Okay. So in our phase one engagement, we conducted an online survey that was open back in the winter from November 24th to December 5th, to December 9th rather. And it was to gain some insight from the public on the policy directions and the background information that we had available. We had 115 participants in total, 60%, 60 people partially completed the online survey and 55 did the entire survey. Just great. Some of the questions that we asked were around the seven themes of focus for the new official plan. And we saw that economic development, housing and protecting the environment were seen as the most important from the public. And obviously here you can see from the chart closely followed by growth and climate change as well. We asked the public if there were any themes or areas of focus that were missing or we needed to be covered by the official plan. And they noted that there's no additional themes or areas of focus, but did give some great open-ended responses relating to natural heritage, ecotourism, farming methods, reconciliation, recreation and water and sewage rates. So we've considered all of those and noted them all down here on the slide and further in the policy directions report. We asked the public about the growth in West Algen and how do they believe West Algen will need, what West Algen will need to do to manage the growth effectively. And they gave us great feedback on planning for the future, providing opportunities for intensification and additional commercial institutional and open space uses within the existing settlement areas and taking that direction into the new official plan. We asked the public as well on the new official plan, the policy options for on-farm diversified uses and agritourism uses. If they should be considered or if there's anything else that they would like to see. They rec, they picked recreational uses as the number one answer, followed by retail uses of small farmers markets. And other types of uses similar of that nature to be on farm and anything else value added on the farm as well was also a popular response here. Another question that we asked were the additional types of farm uses that they would not support. This one we left open-ended to see responses. Wind turbines was a very popular answer. Infringing on existing building regulations was something that came up. The noise levels of different activities not being allowed and permitted. So if there was some type of track on the farm uses, that could be disturbance to the existing uses and people living there. Anything that creates pollution or crowding came up. And the bed and breakfast topic came up a bit in the survey as well here. So there was some support and some others that were a fan of the idea. So great feedback all around on what else we can see. There were different questions around what opportunities for environmental protection and climate change. The main opportunities were to enhance the environmental protection. That was widely supported. So this is managing stormwater, reducing our energy and additional ideas that we got from the survey were reducing the high water and sewage rate. Looking into charging stations, incentives for existing homeowners and energy efficient homes and dark sky communities to reduce some light pollution. Another question that we asked on the survey was what type of housing is most needed in West Algen? The largest response was single detached dwelling closely followed by apartment buildings, so about higher density uses. And we asked, we had many open, open-ended answers and suggestions for the team to consider in the survey that are listed here. These touched on the TransCanada Trail, the Marina, the gas stations and car washes that are already existing. Alternatives for tiny homes, granny suites and shipping containers. So those modular smaller homes. Promoting carpooling and ride sharing programs, preventing prohibited development in wetlands, forests and played areas. Supporting green energy projects and support and encourage cycling throughout the community. I'll pause there if there's any questions on the survey or types of responses.
Questions? Bonnie?
Yeah, um, as with any public survey, of course you want to have a good response. I see that 115 is about 2% of our population and not all of them actually lived in the community. So to start with, my question is, is that an average response rate for this kind of public survey in your experience?
I definitely think we've seen different rates based on the types of communities and accessibility of the survey and promotion. So we tried to run it for a period of time that allowed people to access it. There's different response rates that you can get based on different promotional tools. So for a community of this size with different internet constraints and a lower kind of more spread out rural population, that was a good response rate in our opinion. And like we said at the beginning, there's lots of opportunities to engage. So although it might not have all been captured at this stage, there's the drafts that will be commented on. There's time to raise comments and questions in front of council as well. So we feel that our engagement plan will capture the questions and comments that the population does, maybe a little bit more than 2%.
Okay. And my second part of that question is with regard to the percentage of people that either just live in the municipality or live and work in the municipality. And there seemed to be a discrepancy between your summary number, which was a total of 35% were in the community. And then looking at the appendix, it said 76%. So I'm not exactly sure what number of that 115 were actually West Algen people who lived here or lived and worked here.
That's a great question, Bonnie. I think I'm going to have to get back to you on that one. Just if we can take that back and send you a note off. That's okay.
Okay. I might've been looking at it wrong, but it just seemed like such a large discrepancy. I wasn't sure whether those numbers were accurate or not. And I guess the other question that maybe is for our planner, I wondered, you know, there were comments about, you know, why don't you approve this or that? Are there developments that have been requested, have there in our municipality that have been declined? And if so, what kinds of development have been declined?
If I may speak, we have, I've only been back here in the past like five weeks. I haven't, I'm not aware of any developments that have been declined. No planning applications have been declined.
Okay. All right. I just wondered if we needed to consider that in making changes to our official plan. So thank you.
Do you know further questions? Continue on.
Great. Thank you. I'll walk us through. So we go to the next slide here, the vision, the goals and a couple of the policy directions. I just grabbed a couple of highlights from our report. The vision statement you saw previously, and it's, it's kind of an overarching statement in the OP. It's aspirational. Provide a framework for growth and development aimed at enhancing the existing vibrant rural community. Clear directions for protecting our agricultural, environmental assets, enhancing local services, community facilities and green spaces. And ensuring that there's a range and mix of housing for current and future residents to meet their needs and providing opportunities for economic development. The next slide, rolling out from the vision are a series of proposed official plan goals, modifications, if you will, from some of the current goals. And provide a little bit more clear direction about what the goal of the OP is. So with respect to growth, focusing growth in Rodney and West Lauren and protecting the rural and cultural character of the Hamilton villages. It's about achieving sustainable growth and population, economic development and housing. But improving the range of housing opportunities with compact and compatible development and effort to build complete communities. So protecting and enhancing the natural and cultural heritage features in the areas of aggregate resource potential extraction purposes. And improving the essential community services related to health, education, recreation, infrastructure, safety and collaboration with our private partners and neighboring municipalities in the county. The next slide. So the, the policy directions, there's a bunch of them. The ones we're probably just going to touch on in a little more detail today are the growth management, housing and economic prosperity policy directions. As worth noting that there aren't major, we call major gaps or like obvious conformity deficiencies in the current OP. There's just a number of, as I say, changes that need to be updated to modernize the policies and keep them abreast of current terms and in directions and these sort of things. So with respect to growth management, the growth management direct So with respect to growth management, the growth management directions are to direct the majority of the development to West Lauren and Rodney, the population target. The OP is intended to be sixty five hundred people. Uh, the housing target that goes with that is seven hundred and seventy new households, so those between twenty twenty one and twenty forty six. Which is an average growth rate of thirty units a year. It's helpful to know what the average is. Generally, development works in chunks, you know, someone puts in a subdivision in their development, you'll, you'll see it a bit more staggered. But it's helpful to understand what the average would be over that time horizon for context purposes. And then, uh, policy direction around supporting, uh, medium and higher density residential development in the settlement areas. Some density caps to assure development range, mix of housing types or a compact form. Um, and I know that a survey results aren't to be all and end all, but it was, was interesting to see the, at least the, for those that response chose to respond that. You know, there was quite a balanced, um, feedback in terms of the types of housing, you know, singles, semis. Um, secondary suites, townhomes, even apartments being, being, so there, it basically. You know, between that and, uh, and the overall growth management objectives is the need to make sure the. Policies for housing allow for this sort of mix of housing types to occur in a very flexible way. What are the next slide? Now we're into housing and, uh, that's seven hundred and seventies is the housing. Post housing target. Proposing to include an affordable housing target as well for low and moderate income households that, um, aligns with the county's overall target of. Twenty percent of all new housing units to be. Policies in, there's a very specific definition for what affordable means, uh, that we carry and it's, uh. Approximately, you know, the average sale price is thirty percent less than, than the average across the. County, I guess, would be the measure. Policies in the new OP would also support, encourage purpose built rental housing, uh, as well as, um, you know, perhaps a number of policies around. Housing in a more compact form and that might even get into some alternative, um, you know, formats of housing to be encouraged, as we alluded to earlier. Your slides. In terms of, uh, again, some additional ones on housing is to support some of the accessory dwelling units in settlement areas. Make sure we have robust policies for those, uh, that allow us to create two or more. This is one of those elements that's changing right now as we speak out of the planning act. I believe it's up to three or four units, so that does create some. Challenges, but certainly two or three is, 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 is on us the, we have the right policies to guide. Some of that secondary suite development, we should be, should be okay. Have some direction on monitoring the rental housing stock, uh, cooperation with the county and have a definition of affordable housing in the OP that aligns with the county's definition. From an economic prosperity perspective, we're talking about the jobs and employment opportunities. The plan is to. Provide for, plan for eight hundred and eighty jobs, job growth in the municipality. By twenty forty six, looks out to, again, an average of about thirty five jobs a year. Uh, for reference, you know, the balance between population and job growth is just pretty healthy with thirty units a year to thirty five jobs per year. New employment land is, is something we haven't talked about today, but that will have to be identified in the OP as we identify the shortfall, so we'll have some options on, on where to locate that. That new employment area, uh, provides some flexibility for some additional complimentary uses in, in these areas. For institutional uses, um, and also ensure that the policies. Um, have updated designations so that we can have the, you know, the appropriate mix of complimentary uses to support, uh. Some of those more traditional employment activities. And so wasn't gonna touch on these other themes, but there are, you know, like, maybe on the agricultural side, there's a number of agricultural policies. Picking the value added side and some additional permitted uses that'll go into the agricultural policies of the plan. And, and the other policies, uh, natural heritage hazards, cultural heritage, source water protection, climate change and consultation engagement will all be updated. We go to the net. Okay, so we'll pause there. That's still a lot of. Uh, and I can appreciate too that there's statements and you're probably wondering a little bit like, what's the specific policy, what is it gonna look like? And we have the draft policies in front of you, you'll be able to, to draw those connections, but I think. At least on the housing and growth management and employment side, it's probably a little more clear about the direction we're going and, you know, happy to take questions or clarification even. At this time before we wrap up into next steps.
Questions? Buddy.
I just need clarification around, uh, your discussion about density caps. Do we have? That terminology in place or that, that policy framework in place now, or is that something new that we're going to be considering? Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, it, it, it means the, you know, most. Policies in OPs will have at least. Like an upper limit, sometimes a lower limit for, for density by your different unit types. That's. Usually in your zoning bylaw and sometimes in your OP and so, um, I am not sure off top of my head if there are any density limits in your OP. So I see Heather shaking her head, there are not. And so the idea is that, uh, I mean, depending on how we do the policies that we're gonna be providing some guidance for, for upper and lower limits. And that ensures that, you know, the lower limit is good so that you, uh, like you have a minimum essentially, so that you ensure. There's a good use of the land for the development and the upper limit is usually there to deal with compatibility. So something isn't also too dense. In, in, in an area. So that's the idea, but until we do the details, I'm sure it's gonna be a little, feel a little abstract.
Okay, my question is, when we take a look at Algon County's official plan and they're looking at twenty percent, uh, affordable housing. Those numbers in my mind will be much more realistically achieved in central Algon or Almer. Uh, even, even in Southwood, but as, uh, as you get to West Algon, are, are those, are those numbers something that? We need to adhere to or how, how do we work through that and be able to, uh, comply with the Algon County plan? And also be able to support development in West Algon.
Great question. I think counties generally has a pretty flexible approach to how the lower tiers try to implement their directions. So the language in our OP would probably read something like, in support of the county's twenty percent target. The municipality, you know, will include, um, has identified. You know, a range of housing types, including, you know, opportunities for second suites or accessory units, you know. Townhomes and other forms that tend to be more affordable, like it's. Be kind of a, you, in a place where we're trying to attract economic development, we can't require, can't go as far to like require a certain percentage. In an application and that sort of thing. So I, I would imagine it would be flexible and we would, we would try to say we're in support of, you know, and not looking for an alternative target. Or anything like that.
Okay, that, uh, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, certainly the, uh, we want to encourage, uh. You know, all the affordable housing that we can obtain in West Algon and, uh. You know, making sure that we have the appropriate language in, uh, in our OP to be able to do that, uh, I think is quite important. So I'm glad you're, uh. Glad you're thinking on those lines. Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's any way in the official plan that we can. Put wording that would, um. Try to deal with vacant commercial properties.
Okay. That is a tricky one. So, uh, can you elaborate a little bit on me about what types of? Issues you're thinking about when it comes to vacant commercial property, just so I understand before I answer the question.
I, I'm really thinking about. Bottom line is the aesthetics of, of, uh. You know, vacant storefronts and things like that that are not attractive to a community and. We don't seem to have any tools to avoid that and maybe an official plan isn't the place to. To be placing those tools either, but I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Okay, okay, now I understand better. So if it's, if you're dealing with some of the aesthetics around, you know. Vacant storefront properties in the main street environment. The OP can provide direction on what the municipality can do to try to address it. They, they will, they will be, um, like directional. And so some of the tools municipal, like, because mainly the underlying driver is population growth. For, for, for main street commercial, the more people you have living, the more need for local services and that is ultimately the sort of, the main thing. But in the meantime, we understand that like vacant storefronts is not good for the existing businesses either. It has a negative impact. Um, so what you can do is you can have a, a couple of things we could, you know, you could direct. Or consider a, a community improvement plan, which is a way to, um, you know, encourage and offer small grants and things for local businesses to, to. To, um. To, to open up or to improve their facades and take care of it. You can, uh, certainly if you have issues around, um. Residential, uh, on the main street ground floor, that's always a question. It's always a tricky one. You can either restrict it. But then you might get vacant storefronts or you can allow for it and at least you won't basically lose the commercial space that might not be as desirable. If it's unruly, you can deal with it with your property standards by law. If it's like unkempt or not well. Captive, there's broken windows and these kind of things and you can deal with it that way. Um, and I, I, I might pause there and see if Heather had any additional. Thoughts on this. It's a bit of a. Bit of a trickier one to, to, to solve, but. Through policy.
Okay, thanks Patty. I do agree with you Patty. This is a tricky issue to solve and we're not alone in this matter. There is many, uh, communities. A lot of especially rural, small communities across Ontario that deal with these issues. Um, if this is something that council would like to see if there's a way in which we can incorporate policies within the official plan. I'm more than happy to do some further research on this to see if there is, um, you know, best practices that other municipalities are doing. To try to address this issue. Unfortunately, I just don't have any better suggestions beyond what Patty has provided at this time.
That's fine, thanks. I wanted, I just wanted to kind of pick your brain on that and make sure, you know, if this was the time that some wording was placed in the official plan. That would, would help with that issue, I thought, you know, I would ask, thanks.
Yeah, I'm definitely happy to, to look into that further for you, councillor Ro.
One, one of the main concerns that I have on this is, is there seems to be a, a, a trend and, and I think it's just basic economic. That, uh, when it comes to, uh, square footage, storage costs that, uh. There, there seems to be an influx of, of people that are coming to the small rural communities and they're buying what could potentially be. Uh, storefronts or businesses on the main streets and they're at a price that these people are not interested in a storefront. Uh, or any business, but it's just simply the fact, uh, that it's available storage that, uh. Per square foot, much cheaper than they can find somewhere else. So it seems to take away a lot of the opportunity off our main streets.
Well, if I say, if, if that, that is something that, you know, zoning and policy can influence if there are people using properties for the. Uses that they're not intended to, for example, you know, those main street commercial uses are not really intended for. Storage as a primary use, right? So you can certainly restrict that and call it out and you can deal with it through your enforcement, your bylaw enforcement. So that's something you could consider. That's an issue.
Okay, so you know further questions? Uh, we're gonna take a next step here.
Okay, well, uh. The next steps really are at this point to, uh, you know, certainly consider the feedback today and start to work on the first draft of the OP. When we have a draft, we haven't quite decided, but I mean, I think in the interim, the best way to write the OP is to send section. Staff and work back and forth on sections until we have a full, complete version that we can share with, with the technical advisory committee. And then work with them and then ultimately bring a, a new plan, a draft plan. Uh, meet with county staff to get their feedback on the first draft as well and then work on the second version and then public engagement. We're still working on the, if timelines for this because of the sort of the election cycles, uh, but, uh. Our, in our goal is to sort of complete this, uh, if possible, next little while. So I think that is the end of the slide. Um, we'll pause and take any final thoughts or questions, so, from Mayor and Council.
Hey. I'm not seeing anybody holding their hand up, but, uh, I, I, who, who, uh, now, did you guys co-author this report?
Yeah, this policy directions report is, is, is from Dylan with support from staff, a lot of input from staff in the advisory committee. But we're the, for the policy directions, it's just mainly us and Watson, of course, has done all our economic development work.
Well. Personally, I have to commend, uh. Those responsible for a planning document, I did find this, uh, very easy to read, very easy to. Uh, even for myself to get a good basic understanding of the direction that you were going. So, uh. Uh, certainly, uh, congratulations to you and your team for, uh, a very good initial report and it gives me. It gives me some comfort that, uh, moving forward, that this is going to be a process that, uh. Could maybe not be that painful.
Even for less pain, I appreciate the comments, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be sure to read them, who did most of the work on this report, then Zoe and Kelly and. Thank you.
Okay, just any other final, final comments from council to, if you wanna put forward. Okay, Madam Clerk.
So that West Algon Committee of the Hall hereby endorses the new official plan policy directions report with the inclusion of. Inclusion received today from council.
Do I have a mover and secondor moved by Leitham and seconded by Talia? All in favor? That is carried.
So we're at adjournment, sir.
Well, thank you all very much and, uh, we'll see more of you going into the future.
So that West Algon Committee of the Hall hereby adjourns at ten twenty one AM to meet again at the call of the chair.
Over and second or please, by Row, seconded by Cameron, all in favor?
Sir, uh, the planner has her hand up?
Yes, Heather.
Oh, it can wait till after the motion is completed.
Okay, I thought you were just in favor of the motion to adjourn.
Of course I am.
I think everybody was in favor, so we'll call that carried.
Okay.
Now, Heather.
I just wanted to add further that, um, I am, um, coming back from parental leave reviewing all the work that's been done by Dylan. Um, and all the planners. I am very happy and very pleased with the quality of the work. They've done an excellent job and during my leave, I'm very happy with what I'm seeing here and I look. I'm very looking forward to, uh, seeing drafts of the official plan and moving this project forward. So job well done.
Right. With that, uh, we'll get on with our day and, uh, thank you very much.
Welcome back, Heather.